Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, Mr. Bryant.
Hello, Mr. Bryant. How are you?
Doing good, thanks.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Ms. P.
Hi, how are you?
Okay.
Good. I'm keeping my video off.
How are you going to signal me if you want to say something if I can't see your beautiful face?
I'll just speak because I'm using my laptop and I'm not at home and so video uses a lot of whatever and I've already frozen and tried to come back in twice.
Okay.
Or maybe I can type it in the chat.
I'll try and keep.
Yeah, and there's also a raise hand function, I think, that you could use.
Looking for Lashandra and Juan.
Sherri, are you back with us or are you still in Richmond?
I came back early for this meeting and which means I have to do one more stint this week to help her out, which is supposed to be Thursday, but then there's going to be an ice storm, so we'll see what happens.
Maybe you'll go down tomorrow and just be there for Thursday.
I don't want to.
Oh, okay. You're the grandmother.
I might go Friday.
You're the grandmother, you can do whatever you want to do.
I don't know, I'm spending two nights a week with them and that's really enough. Last night I had to sit through the bachelor and anyway, if I can just, this one is just a day, you know, five hours during the day, so I'll fit it in somehow. But I don't want to spend another night with them. You know, I like them and everything, but you know, enough is enough.
Right, folks, it is four o'clock. So it looks like Mr. Wade will be a couple of minutes late. I'm not sure about Lashandra, if somebody could just reach out to her, please. But being as.
I'm typing.
Okay, thank you. But being as it is four o'clock, today is Thursday, February 9th, 2021, and this is the Charlottesville City School Board Budget Work Session. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. And Madam Clerk, if you could call the hall, please.
It's Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Present.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger? Dr. Craft?
Present.
Ms. McKeever?
Here.
Ms. Perrier?
Here.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
All right, thank you. And then I'd like to call for approval of the proposed agenda, please.
So moved.
A second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you would call for a vote, please.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger? Dr. Craft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so again, we are meeting today to review the superintendent's suggested budget, and so I will turn it over to you, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Thank you, Madam Chair and school board members. So tonight, what we'd like to do is, there were a few questions that the board asked us to bring back information on, so we'd like to present that information to you and then answer any additional questions that you might have with the budget or receive any additional feedback that you'd like to give to us. So now, Leslie? I'm going to take care of the first slide to remind ourselves of our budget development process and our priorities in this budget to recruit and retain highly qualified staff to maintain the continuity of our high-quality programs and then, as we're making funding decisions, to apply lens of equity and all of our considerations. Now I'll turn the presentation over to Ken Powell and we will be more than happy to answer questions at the conclusion. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins, Madam Chair, members of the board. One of the items that we were asked to provide additional information regarding is, what are some additional salary action scenarios and what would those scenarios cost? And so what you see at the top here is what the total cost is of the current proposed action of, that's an average of 2% increase for all staff. Another option would be to do two steps on the pay scale and that would be the equivalent of a 2.5% increase and that would cost an additional $244,660. That would be the incremental cost above what's already in the proposal that you all have been looking at. Another option that we looked at would be two steps on the pay scale plus an increase of a half a percent, if you will, so two steps plus a half percent action and that would be an incremental cost of $521,434. Option three would be two steps on the pay scale, which is two and a half increase, two and a half percent, and then another 1% on top of that for an average increase of 3.5%. That would be an additional $798,208. And a fourth option would be two steps on the pay scale, which is an average of a two and a half percent increase plus an additional 1.5% or an average of 4% in total salary action. The incremental cost for that scenario would be $1,074,982. And Leslie, if we could go to the next slide and then we can go back and forth between these slides, certainly, but this next slide shows, as you all are well aware, the current budget proposal depends heavily on CARES, you know, using our CARES allocation to address what are considered the most pressing needs. And we've had a lot of discussion about then how much CARES money we leave untouched in the FY22 budget in order to provide some runway and ability to cover whatever may come with the FY23 budget. And so the current budget proposal would allow for a carryforward of $2,054,745. And so then the incremental cost of each of those other four scenarios that we just shared is shown there on the second line. And then you can see on the bottom line how much CARES money would be left over to bring to bear on the FY23 budget because we don't know how long it would take for the city's revenue to recover and for their revenue picture to clarify. So really, these are the, the previous slide and this slide are really the new information that's in the slide deck. Everything else, the budget changes document and so forth are all, it's all material you've seen before. So I'll pause here and see what the pleasure of the board and Dr. Atkins is as far as discussion because this is what's different or this is the new information.
So.
Ms. Powell, if we could just go through, just to pull it up for our viewing audience so that they can see what those actual budget changes, we won't go through them, but we will display those budget changes. Leslie, if we go to the next slide, next two slides, please. Great. And we can see the salary actions, the non-discretionary contract actions, and then the school-based program actions that we were recommending. Next one, Leslie. And the next slide is the changes from FY22, from FY21 to the 22 budget. Now, last slide with no changes from our previous discussion around the budget, the revenue summary. And then we put the revenue and the expenditures together. Next slide, Leslie, the summary of all our budget revenues, our funds. Now, we can go back to that first slide if we want to have a discussion about the impact on our budget. And thank you, Madam Chair. We'll turn it back over to you for any questions or discussion.
Thank you. I think I'll let my fellow board members chime in.
Yeah, so thank you, Madam.
Mr. Wade, why don't you jump in?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to make sure I understand, if you can explain, you know, for me and to the public, you know, that the proposed FY23 carryforward and all of that is the same, but the, you know, the increases is different. So what does that mean? Why is it the same?
So if, if the board wants to, you know, suggest or entertain a salary action that's different than the one, the step plus .75 for an average increase of 2%, so if it goes, if the board wants to go beyond that and do a total salary action that's 2.5% or and so forth, as detailed on the slide that's prior to this one, then what it does is the more you do in next year in FY22 with CARES funding, it simply means the less CARES funding is available to bring to bear on the FY23 budget. So that's what it boils down to. The more that's done in FY22 with CARES funding, the less CARES funding there is to bring to bear on the FY23 budget.
Ms. Wade, one of the questions that came up at our last budget work session is that some members of the board wanted to see the impact that increasing the salary action would pay upon the budget. And so we've run out several scenarios to show the impact for the board's consideration.
So for example, in scenario one, the current proposal that's detailed out on those budget change sheets that we went through quickly, you know, that proposal would leave or allow for a $2,054,745 carryforward of CARES funds that would be available for FY2023. If we did two steps on the pay scale, that would be a 2.5% average increase instead of a 2% increase for employees. But instead of having $2,054,000 remaining, we'd have $1,810,085 in CARES money remaining for FY23. So you're comparing that first row with the second row when you're looking at the difference in what would be the carryforward dollars available for FY23.
Got it, got it.
Ms. McKeever?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering, I feel pretty strongly we need to do two steps on the pay scale for a 2.5% increase, number one specifically. Obviously, I would love to see number two, but seeing the costs really does give me pause. I think what I like about two steps on the, and so I would like to ask Dr. Atkins specifically why she chose one step plus .75 as an average increase instead of number one. I, what I, and so yes, I will leave it for that question first.
I think Ms. McKeever, it just boils down to making choices. And it's not that one, I even anticipated two steps on the scale. We ran these scenarios at the request of, at your request. My consideration was for 2%. The governor put in his budget of 2% salary action. The governor put it in his budget as 2% for a bonus. We'd rather move that from being a bonus to 2% that can be sustained from year to year. And knowing that we have limited dollars, I left it at the 2%. Now, if the General Assembly recommends that we go higher than that 2%, and there was some legislative, some bills recommending that we go higher, there was some discussion that either the Senate or the House may recommend after going through appropriations, recommend a higher teacher pay raise than the governor originally had in his budget. And then that means that we would get more state funding and we would then note that in our budget and reflect that in our budget. I do see your point, though. Last year, we did not give our teachers and our staff a step increase. And so two steps on the salary scale would be able to make up for the step that they did not get last year.
Dr. Atkins, do you mind, can you explain to me and to anybody in the public or anybody else who might need, is there a difference in, in say, a 2% increase as opposed to the steps as far as what it does for an employee as they get closer to retirement or their benefits?
The total increase of 2% means the same as if a step was 2%. Either way, it means the same on the salary. We say 2% because the, the gap between one step and the next step when you're moving up is less than 2%. So typically, we will move our employees up on the pay scale one step and then add an additional percentage or a portion of a percentage to it to get us to that 2%. And it means the same thing. I think that's what it boils down to. It means the same thing. Kim, you want to add to that?
Sure. The average increment between the steps on Auburn scales is right around a quarter of a percent. And Charlottesville is actually in pretty good shape as far as having some good parity between scales and not really crazy scales that, you know, go up and level off and then they're really pretty, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? I'm struggling to find it. But they're, they're not, they're pretty smooth pay scales and they have an average increase of one and a quarter between steps. And so one, at what a point, so like, for example, in the scenario of step plus a .75 for an average increase of 2%, that .75 gets applied to all the pay scales, so it actually elevates all of the pay tables by the .75. But it's a process that's, you know, we've been doing for years and it works, it works well. And I was really pleased when I came to Charlottesville to see that the pay tables were not a mess because I've seen places where they are and it's not, it's very expensive to try to straighten them out if they are, if they don't have, you know, reasonable increments and a nice, you know, fairly steady slope.
I would just, I think that's very helpful. I think the main reason that I am looking at the 2.5% increase or the number one scenario is that it doesn't change our pay scales. And so therefore, we actually, depending on who, you know, so I think it does change our ask next year if we're not changing our pay scales by 0.5% or 0.75%. And it kind of rewards the people who are here and who have been with us by saying, look, we know you didn't get your step last year, but we're going to give you two steps this year and then we'll be back on track with, with steps. I remember that being kind of a big deal and after the recession in 2008 that lasted for, I don't know, five years, maybe still be ongoing, but anyway, and I do think that it would minimize. So I think by not increasing all of our scales this year, that is, I think, I don't know, I wouldn't say, what do I want to say? I want to say it's like, it's reflecting to council acknowledgement that we want to support our employees, but we're not going to increase our whole pay scale this year. Maybe we do it next year when there is more revenue coming in. That's not just one-time funding. So that's why I think, one of the reasons that I think the two steps makes sense and correct me if I'm wrong, I would just, I don't know. I just think that if we don't increase the pay scales this year, that is actually helps us next year in our carryforward.
Ms. McKeever, I can, I see your thinking around that and you are absolutely correct when, during the down, 2008 downturn of the economy, there was one year, Charlottesville was very fortunate. Many school divisions went multiple years without pay, pay action. Charlottesville, we missed one, maybe two, where we didn't move our employees up and as soon as we saw some recovery and opportunity, we then made the corrections on our pay tables in order to move our employees up and staying competitive is important. That's one of our goals always in our school division and a part of our strategic planning. So I certainly can understand your reasoning around you.
Madam Chair, this is Ms. Perrier. As I mentioned to you earlier, I am keeping my video off because I'm using my hotspot and my laptop and I don't want to freeze. I appreciate everything that you have said, Jennifer, and I understand it completely. But my concern is we don't know what is going to happen next year. And we all hope that the revenue improves, but if it doesn't and we have less CARES money, there's no guarantee that the municipality, i.e. the city of Charlottesville, will be able to make up the difference. I mean, we've already recognized that there have been some city services whose contracts have gone up. In addition to that, we are asking for the same money that we had last year again this year because of the financial forecast. And if we next year are forced again to ask for level funding, that could have a serious implication on our budget once again. Dr. Atkins, how are you feeling about taking more money out of CARES?
Well, Ms. Perrier, I do feel that, that we have to be cautious in how much we carry forward from CARES because we don't know what the revenue forecast will look like at the state nor at the local level. And, and currently, we're asking for level funding and we are, we're hoping that we receive that level funding from the city. The revenue forecast right now is not strong. And so it concerns me each time we diminish the amount of carryforward. However, we have to respond to what our needs are. So we're caught in a difficult position and recruitment and retention of our staff and our teachers is certainly important.
So may I ask you one more question, Dr. Atkins?
Yes.
If the worst-case scenario happens and the city does not give us the money that we are requesting, we would then have to take more money from CARES. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. I could certainly go back and look at the budget and see if some of our proposed expenditures, that we can make adjustments in any of those, those recommendations. And that's what I would do. I'd go back and look at where might we make, take out some of those recommendations or any other place that we can make adjustments.
And the things that you would make adjustments with would not be programmatic. We might be right back where we are with making a decision about salary increases or lack thereof, lesser. In other words, if you, if we move and propose more money and then we don't get what we're asking for from the city and we have to cut, we don't tend to cut programmatic things because all of the things that we've put in are things that we say we need for our students in order to be successful. So we could be in a position where we'd have to give raises, but not what we anticipate if we go with option number one.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, I guess I would like to kind of follow up on this and I'm very torn about this because I certainly feel like our, our staff deserves more and, and especially in this last year, you know, and what they've, what they've had to do and the load that they've had to carry. You know, I, I'm really concerned about using one-time funding to fund ongoing salary increases and, 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 you know, I wonder, what, what is the implication of that on our budgets in the next few years? I guess we don't know what city council is going to do, but it seems to me that general budgeting would, budgeting practice would not have us use a one-time funding to fund ongoing salary increases like this, but could somebody speak to that? You know, how, how much of a concern is that?
Dr. Craft, the only thing I can say that might be of some help there, none of us have a crystal ball, but if a year allows us to get back to more normal operations and therefore more normal revenues for the city, the average, and this was in one of the presentations, I think the Saturday workshop presentation has this information, the average increase, average annual increase in the city appropriation to schools has been 2.3 million. So, and that was over a periods of like three or four years excluding fiscal year 20, well, the current fiscal year, which was not in this, the budget development for this past year didn't feel very normal, but up through FY20, looking at three to five years prior to that, the average annual increase was 2.3. And so that's just for reference.
And, and Dr. Craft, your point about using one-time funding, we wanted to make clear as we laid out this budget is that this budget is heavily dependent on one-time funding. Heavily dependent. And that is not just for salary actions, it's for all of the programmatic recommendations that we're making. It is dependent on one-time funding and that's the CARES dollars. However, the CARES dollars are intended to be able to help us respond to the needs of our students and to our staff. So in that sense, it's the right way to use CARES dollars in the sense that we are putting in programs that will need to be sustained. That is the difficult decision.
So. One other question, if, as you say, that there's some legislation at the state level that might, that might support larger increases for teachers and if that were to pass, and I assume then you're saying there would be funding associated with that, with that, you know, so if we say, if we approved option number one tonight or next week and then there were more state funding, would, would we just sort of plunk that state funding in where we're, instead of taking more out of our CARES money? If that were to happen?
Yes. But we would keep in mind that when the state puts up salary increase in their budget, the allocation that we get from the state is a very small allocation. It's based on the average salary in the Commonwealth, the average teacher salary in the Commonwealth for the SOQ-funded positions. So each of those descriptors diminishes the amount of funding that we get significantly.
And the LCI is applied as well.
And LCI is applied, so there are many factors that impact the amount that we get. However, when the governor or the General Assembly puts a raise in, we do all that we can to align with that recommendation and many times we go beyond that recommendation. This budget, however, is in alignment with the percentage, This budget, however, is in alignment with the percentage. But it translates it from a bonus to an actual raise.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow up question too after Jennifer, Madam Chair.
Go ahead. Okay, so I, I think my concern is, I guess what I'm trying to do here is. Show the people who've been employed by us over the past year. The, the appreciation through the step process. I feel like the pay scales rewards everybody who doesn't even work here anymore into the future forever. Because that's your new baseline for salaries. And while I, you know, I'll give us, I love a raise, I want everybody to get a raise. I, I want the pay scales to change, but given 244,000, I think is. We could probably agree on where we could make that, get those, get that funding. And. I believe will support the current employees in the division by giving them these steps. Versus a raise which will. Increase the pay scales forever for employees who have not worked during this time for our division. Which again, I don't see many, many localities across the state. Giving significant, giving raises in a way that will make us less competitive. But I think this helps us to reward those who've been with us. More so than the point seven five. I'm sorry, more than just the step plus one seven five. Also, I don't think we should discount the fact that we might see more stimulus funding coming from the federal government. And so I, I don't want us to be, I don't want $300,000 or $250,000 to be a barrier. Because I think we'll probably see more stimulus money. And I do think that we could agree probably on some limited changes to the superintendent's recommendation. For next year, so that's my.
So, thank you. I think my question kind of ties in with that because I wanted to know, as just for my clarification is that your original budget. Dr. Atkins, you had a 2%. And we said, you know, we kind of, you know, challenged you to say, what would, you know, additional increase in pay look like? And you came with two and a half to. You know, three, three and a half what we have today. And the additional cost is, you know, starting at 240,000 and. First of all, is that, is that correct? Is that what I, that's my understanding, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. And so if we just stuck with the 2%. And Jennifer, you know, kind of got into this a little bit. Would, how competitive would we be with? You know, you know, our competing school districts, you know, the teachers that would typically may apply for Charlottesville city schools.
And Mr. Wade, I'm going to ask if, if one of our staff members can. If you can find for me, regional leak, if you can find any of the other salary actions that may have been published right now.
Dr. Atkins, I believe Renee may have gotten some of that information today from the regional finance meeting that she listened in on. One comment I'll make before we maybe bring that to bear is. Something to remember with salary actions is when we don't give any type of merit or percentage action on the scale, on the scales. The people at the very top that don't have a step. They have, we have a longevity program, a nice one, but there are some people that are actually through all the longevity actions as well. That can be a little tricky. And if we say that we're going to just act on the last step. Then that, what that does is it starts to take the scale and create some of that weirdness that you sometimes see at the end of scales. Where it starts to have a bigger, even, even a bigger than what's already there. And most of our scales do have a bump at the end anyway, because we're trying to, you know, help people with the, it's part of, it's very, it's a competitive strategy. Across school divisions as people head into retirement to, to put that extra bump at the end. But in times like this, just, I just felt like I need to, people need to keep that in mind because you certainly may, that's just something you need to be aware of.
And, and Ms. Wade, to, to follow up on your question. If you recall several budget cycles ago, we hired a consultant to take a look at our salary scale. And not just compare our salary to, our salary scales to our neighbors, school divisions. We wanted an analysis, a market analysis. How our salary skills compare with the market for other graduates of universities with a bachelor's degree or a master's degree. And that analysis brought forward that we would want to aim for raising our salaries up to $60,000. A year, a starting salary. So when we have a salary action, there are two goals with that salary action. One is to retain our employees. And the second one is to attract employees. To position us so that our, our salary scales and our pay scales are attracted to those who are coming into our school division. But also attractive to those who are in our school division. We've come a long way, we pushed our salary, starting salaries close to the $50,000 mark. And the, the step plus helps to get us closer to that. As we continue towards that $60,000. And, and if we don't get there soon, we'll have to raise that $60,000 higher just because of the cost of living. But that's the impact that it has. We want to attract and retain our employees.
Ms. Bryson Morseberger.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, I've been watching the news recently and the governor was talking about. Summer school or year round school. So if that happens, do we have to change our requests for this year? Or does that go into next year's request? And if it, we might have to go back to the CAREs money. I guess what I'm asking is if we might have to go back into the CAREs money that we have right now after whichever increase. To do summer school if that becomes a thing that we're doing this year.
So then let's, let's take the first part of your question with the recommendation from the governor. If the governor recommends that we extend the school year. There, he would also issue a definition of what that means to extend the school year. Along with providing additional funding that will allow us to do that. Absent of the governor. Providing that clarity and the funding, our intent is to run a summer school program. We get some matching dollars from the state with our summer school program. We're in the process now of planning that program and extending the amount of days that we will offer summer school. So even if the governor does not recommend extending the school year. We will run our summer school program in Charlottesville city and cover it with funds that are already identified in our FY 21. And then part of FY 22 budget to cover that in addition to the funding that we get from the state. And then would be no additional or no new funding that we would use for those programs.
Dr. Bryant, did you have any questions?
Yes, I just had a comment. I, you know, I'm listening to all the comments and certainly Jennifer had a good point. But. Is it my understanding that in our last discussion in regards to the CAREs funding that we wanted to have? As much as we want to give our teachers an additional percentage point, half percentage point raise. That we wanted to keep that CAREs money as a cushion. So that we don't know what the revenues are going to be with the city for next year that we would have that. You know, that cushion set aside so that we, if whatever funding, current funding, the city decides to give us next year that we have that. That funding to cover the gap if necessary. That is what I understood. So if we dip into that funding. Where would it leave us in terms of, of funding for next year? I mean, we'd have a gap, so to speak.
It would reduce the amount of carry forward that we have. If, if we would still have some carry forward, but it would reduce depending on which option the board would consider. It would reduce the amount that we carry forward. And Ms. McKeever makes a good point that we, there is some discussion at the federal level for a third stimulus. Some third stimulus funding, it could be CAREs three that's coming. And if that happens, we don't know how soon that, that will happen. But again, it's one time dollars and we certainly could bring back a recommendation to the board at that point.
So if, for example, we get a third funding of CAREs money, that possibly could go toward that additional raise for the teachers instead? Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions around this particular part of the budget from any of the board members?
Can I just clarify the last point, Dr. Atkins? Are you saying that if, let's just say, if, if the third stimulus is passed. And the money would come available this coming year. If we stayed, if, if we stayed with our original budget recommendation regarding teacher raises, staff raises. Could we then, once we know what that money is, come back and revisit it to increase at that point?
Yes.
Months. Yet, okay. So it's sort of a matter of how we approach this now. Yeah, and that's what's really hard because we don't know, we really don't know what we're, what we might get. I think, I think it's likely there will be some federal money coming, coming down the pike. And so I, you know, it's a question of just sort of how we do this, you know, what, what we do tonight. And then what we might do going forward in a few months if we do get that.
And Dr. Kraft, I, I am always in favor of. Making sure that our salaries are competitive and recognizing the work that our teachers and our staff do. That is always a priority for me. So at any point that we can, and the board wants to consider. Providing for our teachers additional funding and additional raises. I absolutely will support that. And so the third round of CAREs may be a great opportunity for us to do that.
And depending on when those types of monies would, would be known to us. A lot would depend on when that falls in relation to when contracts have already been done and that type of thing. That could influence perhaps, I guess, contracts could always be redone. But those are just, you know, the other things to consider operationally.
Yeah, you make a good point, Kim. Even if it comes after we have issued contracts. If the board takes the action, we would reissue contracts. That we certainly could do that.
So, so sure, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying is that, is your proposal or ideas that we go with the, the original 2%? And maybe see if there is additional CAREs funds available? Is that what you were?
Well, I was asking about that. I, I think that. You know, my, my inclination is to. Is to actually, you know, go with the, with option one, you know, which does, you know, provide for, you know, some additional money. And it's with the 244,000 less from the CAREs money. But I wondered if, you know, so there's, I'd like to, I'd like to at least reach that point. And it's more a question of how we get there and whether we do that now. And then we sort of, we're hoping that we get this, you know, the third stimulus money to offset that. Or, or whether we stick with our original budget proposal. And with the idea that when, when we do know about this federal money. That we would, you know, we would then be able to fund that additional increase. So it's, I'm just wrestling with this in my head, you know, just which is the best way to go about this? Because I'd like to get there. I'd like to get to at least where option one is, and I'm just not sure the best way to do it right now. That's what I'm trying to think through.
So I have a couple of comments and questions, please. So first I want to say I appreciate. All the input, but Ms. McKeever, in, in your attempts to, to word find like how, I, I appreciate the fact that that two step. Might be. Beneficial and, and. Again, rewarding now to our teachers who are, who are on the front lines doing this work. And I, I've been trying to find the word that I think you were trying to find as well. And, and I, I haven't been able to, but I was curious, Kim, with your point. About the upper end of our employees, like, do you know? How many people are at that top end as far as the step? I mean, I want to make sure that they're taken care of. But if this is the way to, to make the best impact for our current staff, then, then I am supportive of that. And I think if that third round of stimulus money comes in, then we have that, you know, but we're doing this now. And I think this makes a difference for the people on the ground now. But you guys correct me.
So I don't know, I, I can't tell you in this moment how many people are at, at top of scale, you know, for all the different scales. But certainly it's something we could get back to you and, and then also. I mean, most of our scales do already, they're not linear at the end, there is a bump up. And you, you do really want to watch and not make the, that type of tail get too exaggerated. It's, it's, it can be problematic for other reasons. But at the same time, you could still consider doing a half percent on the last step. Because that's essentially what would have happened in the, you know, in the proposed. And that's, this is, this is a half a percent. So, you know, it's, what's, what's one more half a percent? For just the, for just the step 29, our, our scales top out at step 29. So that's something we could look at and Renee would have to. Rerun the, the scenarios through our, through our system. And that takes a little time, but. And it's, I, I honestly did not think about the impact of doing two steps versus the, the usual step plus an action. Until we were having this discussion because there's lots of things to think about these days. And I'm sorry I didn't think about that before, but literally as we were talking, I was like, oh yeah. Because from the past, I just can remember this happening before. And then folks who are at top of scale sometimes express concern over things like that, so.
I mean, the, the two steps, I think is a brilliant idea. I like it, I like the reasoning around it. If we start moving in that direction, I'd also like to. Give us a little time to go back and, and see how we maintain our competitive stance. What would that mean? Because we would then be. Reducing that scale by that proposed point seven five percent.
We won't be, we won't be elevating the scale by the point seven five.
So that means that. Any competitive edge that we had. Will be reduced if surrounding divisions are having salary actions.
They are.
That will be adding to their scale.
Yeah, I would love.
But it also, go, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, I felt like I just saw. Some type of worksheet in one of our meetings, you know, that, that really did kind of take a look at how competitive. Or maybe it was in one of your charts, Kim, I can't even remember. That looked at, you know, the fact that we are pretty competitive and, and in the region, you know, not just with our adjacent, our adjacent divisions, but.
And we probably are, Ms. Torres, in the state, and that's where we want to be.
Right, and we want to maintain that, absolutely.
So we could go back and, and take a look and see how might we accomplish both. Because I think both have value.
Can I just suggest that my main reason for this is so that, again, I love, you know, like I said, I just want everybody to know, I want to give everybody raises and everybody steps. That's without understanding what I hear from the board is some reticence to have a bunch of carryover or to reduce the carry forward. Money, so that's why I, I feel like the number one proposal serves the current employees. Gets them to where they should be based on from last year where we couldn't give them a step and then give them a step this year and then put them where they should be. And then, only then, when our employees are where they should be, then we consider raises. And I, and that way we don't, that mean if we don't do a, the raise, then we can reduce the carry, the request for last, next year. I think we'll ask for a raise, that's not in the future, especially if we get federal.
Not, I think we'll ask for a raise. That's not in the future, especially if we get federal, uh, stimulus on cares three. But it does reduce the ask and the carry forward amount that we would be. It, it, does that, does that make sense? Like that we would, that if we raise all of the salaries, then we will be asking for more next year. If we don't raise all the salaries, but we, all of the current employees get two steps, that's a huge difference, I think. Maybe not, but that's how I see it is a carry for, and, and the language is, is escaping me. I apologize, but I think it's the carry forward.
And Jennifer, I think what you're saying is that if we don't, you know, raise the scale, so to speak, and just do steps, then next year, if we were in a situation where we only had to give step, step is less expensive, next year than it would be if a rate, that's what I, you're trying to say. It was saying, right? Yeah.
Again, love to give sk- uh, raise.
Right, right, right. But if we were in a step only situation, the step is, once you give a raise on a scale, the steps from then forward are always more.
Higher. And I think, I think my goal is to, the people who are currently in our division, to keep them at baseline. That's where I want them. And baseline to me means this option one.
Then each year you have realized a step.
Correct.
Dr. Atkins, if you had to, I mean, can you give us a sense of or not yet, if you had to go back and revisit, you know, how we could maintain, being competitive plus the two steps? I mean.
I, I would probably start leaning towards option two or a hu- uh, between option two and option three. Um, and I'd just ask the board to give us time to go back and take a look at that.
So does that mean you would, you would want to try and, uh, you know, adjust elsewhere in some of the, um, changes that have been proposed so that we are not, um, cutting into that cares money quite sa- much?
Quite as much. We still have to cut into it, but what I'd like to do is, is I'd like to accomplish what Ms. McKeever is recommending, that two steps. Um, but I'd also like to maintain our competitive edge, um, while doing that. Um, but I, I need to sit with the team and talk about that and, and consider all the implications.
Madam Chair, this is Ms. Perrier. Is it permissible that I ask Dr. Atkins a question now?
Of course it is. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Jennifer, I too agree that we give raises. I don't think there's anyone around the table that says we shouldn't. But I do think that the members of the board are concerned about, um, dipping into the reserve, so to speak, because we don't know what's happening. I understand that. My question to you, Dr. Atkins, is if we go with the proposal that you just mentioned, and leave, and leave everything as it is, and although we would be taking some money out of cares, if we get more cares money, could we replace what, could we put that in the cares account, so to speak? Which would it, which would help our, um, which would help the bottom line?
Absolutely.
I- in other words, if we, if we do the, if we do option one, we're using approximately $250,000 of the cares money. Don't change anything else in the budget. And if and when we get cares three, that cares three would slide into our carryover. So we, we would recognize, we would recognize the cushion that we feel we are losing at this point. Is that possible?
The option one would allow us to, um, to, to actually rectify that lost step that our employees realized last year to, they don't make that up. It, it will also decrease the gap between our starting salaries and our competitive starting salaries, because we will not be, uh, increasing the pay table itself. Um, so it does accomplish, um, getting our employees on the step that, making up for the step that they missed. If the board would allow us time to go back and work on this a little more, um, and allow us to come back with another recommendation where we might be able to accomplish staying competitive, keeping our competitive edge, while also getting our employees, um, making up that step that they missed. It would cost us more than 244,000, um, to do that, but I'd like to go back and see if I can go back through the budget again, to see where we might make some adjustments in order.
But if you cho-, but if you chose not to make adjustments, and we get cares three money, then that would go into, you, you see what I'm saying? Cares three would roll in anyway. So I'm saying, could we do what you just said, not make any adjustments? You know, just do whatever we need to do positively in our thinking that cares three money comes and just put it in there and we would, it, we would have taken something out, but we'd be putting something back. That's what I'm saying.
Yes, Ms. Ms. Perrier, you're absolutely right. We could do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I would be more comfortable with doing that than trying to go back and eliminate because we've worked very hard. And I'm talking about your team and I'm talking about everyone around the board has worked very hard to build this budget. And when we found out that we were going to have more expenses because some contracts went up, we, we went around again and we did that. So if what Jennifer is proposing, and I'm not picking on you, Jennifer, but you pointed it out, okay? Um, is making us more competitive, then we need to be competitive. And we just send positive vibes or whatever you do. And so that cares money comes back and we just dip it right on back to where we took it from originally. I don't want to have to see us take anything out. I really truly don't. And that's, that's where I am. I, I, I believe everybody should get money. I'm, I mean, you know, come on, really? But I don't want us to take anything out because when you start to take things out, you lose something. And we are very concerned about not losing. And so I think if we can do what we need to do, even though we may take a slight hit now, if, if you, in your heart of hearts, really feel that cares three money is coming, then we just slide it right on back in there and as, if it's there this very minute.
Ms. Perrier, I'm all for being positive. Putting that positive energy out there, but there was an if.
In your. Yeah, that, that's the thing I'm, you know, um.
Yeah, there is that if. And I, I really do not want to make more work for, uh, Dr. Atkins and her team, but I, I really am a little, I mean, I would have an interest in, in seeing, you know, how that adjustment could be made if it, if it's not too much work.
Dr. Atkins, could you, would you mind explaining maybe a little bit more? What, you said, y- you know, your preference to be both competitive and to, you know, retain our, our staff and reward our staff. You would go somewhere between option two and option three. Could you explain why option one, would not accomplish that in your opinion?
Um, and I want, wanted to get up and get my budget book. Um, if, if we go with option one, option one moves, impacts our current employees, salary wise. It does not impact employees, uh, who are just starting in our school division.
Can we put up the slides of the different options while we're talking about it just as a refresh?
So option one, Dr. Kraft, was only the two steps. So there wasn't an actual, percentage pay raise built into that one.
Renee Hoover, do you have any? I know you've been looking at some numbers there. And I hate to do this right here in, on live stage, but, um, any quick thoughts?
Um, well, our, our first offer, uh, based on the con- conversation of, of the scale. And if we just do a two steps on the pay scale for the current employees, the step zero does not change. Therefore, when we bring a starting teacher in, they, uh, would be at 48,143. If we do the proposed option of a step plus point seven five percent, our step zero in which we would bring a beginning teacher in would be 48,504, which means that we would increase that beginning step by 361 dollars. And, and I think that that's the, uh, the emphasis that we're trying to make in being competitive is to, to do those steps, uh, for not leaving them the same.
Yeah, I think it's that step zero, that, that, that impact that that has is, is.
Ms. Hoover, would you, um, if you would, let's go to step five. And if you would tell me if we did the point seven five, one step five with the BA 200 days, do a comparison with that for me, please.
So a step five on the current teacher scale of 200 days is 50,958 dollars. If we would implement the proposed, um, salary action, uh, the increase would be 382 dollars on that step. For a, uh, a new pay scale or step would be 51,340 dollars.
So that gives you a, an idea of the impact that that point seven five has on the scale. And so we would lose that impact. The, um, when I said I'd go somewhere between option two and option three, to do the two steps on the scale, but then also not lose the impact that the point seven five is going to have. Option two is an, uh, an additional point five and option three is a one percent beyond the two steps. So I'd go somewhere in between those two.
We are assuming that somebody who is on step five has been teaching in our division for five years. So right now, let, because they didn't get a step increase last year, what is their salary right now as a step four person, since we didn't go up a step last year? That would be helpful as well.
Yeah. It currently, if they are, if they were in the previous year on step four and they didn't go up a step this year, they are still on that step four and that's 50,276 dollars on a two, 200 day scale, uh, 200 day contract. If they, that same individual, Ms. McKeever, went up two steps, uh, they would go from 50,276. And Renee, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, please, right here in front of everyone. Uh, we, that employee with the bachelor's degree would go from 50,276, going up two steps would go to 51,671.
Correct.
My proposal would be to now overlay with that point seven five.
Is there, I mean, Dr. Atkins, honestly, I looked at this option one as the best option because of the lowest price tag. And I, you know, obviously I think, I would love it if you could look at your options between number two and number three and figure out some cost savings that might be, um, allowed, might be had. Um, and I, I don't, I just, I would love to see both. And I know that that's a, a big ask because I don't want to ask city council for, you know, seven million dollars next year. That's, that's not what I want to do. Uh, I do know though that our, well, we've asked a lot of our employees as we always do. They always step up, but B, federal stimulus money is actually meant to be spent. Um, and in like, I'm happy to carry over some because of one-time funding issues. Um, so I, but I do think if we put the, this money in the hands of our employees, like it will serve the economy well. Um, and that it will overall bring more revenue into our, um, city. So, again, that's a bunch of economics that maybe I learned poorly in college, but I, I, I think it would benefit overall if we could, if we could find some cost savings. And again, it might be cost savings not in 21, 22, but in 22, 23. There is one time or very potentially one-time funding, um, in some of these budget items. Um, so it's, the, i- it doesn't necessarily have to be in this year, but it might be in the following year that we see, realize some savings as well. So, I, I would appreciate your offer to go back to the table and look at the, um, potential options. Again, I just want to make sure that all of our staff can get to baseline, um, and then talk about a raise. That's where I would like to start. So, thank you.
And Ms. McKeever, I think one of the things that this, this really does amplify, that a step is great. That's about, um, about $300. Uh, but even when we add that point, $300 over, uh, 24 pays. Um, that's, that's a small amount of, that our employees actually realize, um, in their check. And something is better than nothing. We always acknowledge that. But I think this conversation brings out, um, the impact, even when we're saying a step plus the impact that that has on, uh, the take-home pay of our employees. It's not a huge impact. Um, and I totally agree with you, whatever we can do to say to our staff and our teachers that we appreciate and acknowledge their work is, is important. So if you'd allow me, if the board would allow me to go back and work with the team, and bring back at our next board meeting where the, uh, board is scheduled to take action, another recommendation.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you so much. And thank you to everybody for the conversation around this. Did anybody, I had a, a quick question. I don't know if, if there was a direction we wanted to head, but when we were looking at, um, the changes, uh, the school-based program changes, if we could throw that slide up real quick, please. Uh, and it's something I, I tried to ask in a prior meeting, but I had the wrong, um, email or something plugged up. So when we, we, the addition of the reading specialist and the additional 10 contract days, and I apologize, I may have missed this as it was being discussed, but why is there a difference between, um, the amount of the reading specialists and the math specialists? And it's seven units and it's both 10 days. I was just curious about that, please.
Could be the degree of experience and where they are on the pay scale.
Okay.
It's run, those numbers are run on the actual people.
Gotcha. Thank you.
It's a good question.
Are there any other questions, um, from board members? About this presentation or about anything else that we, we had questions about in, in prior meetings? Did you have anything else that you wanted to?
Um, Madam Chair, and if, if the board has any questions about, um, our, our, some of the, um, requests from the Food Justice Network. And, um, we are prepared to present and answer any of those questions that you might name.
Yes, I would really appreciate that, actually, just to go over the information that was sent out earlier today about that.
We will be more than happy to. Carlton Jones, Mr. Carlton Jones, our nutrition coordinator is with us today. We've been having several meetings with Cultivate Charlottesville. We have a great partnership with them. Jeanette.
Bobby Nader.
Bobby Nader. And Chantel, we've talked and talked, and we have a great pathway forward. We've had many successful partnerships, and there's some grant funding that I think we could bring some clarity to and where we are now. So Ms. Powell, I'm going to turn it over to you if you would go through an explanation of what we provided the board today.
Certainly. So the, the first paragraph of what was sent is follow-up information based on the prior discussions.
Excuse me, Ms. Powell, do we have a copy of that that we could display?
I can send it to Leslie very quickly.
Would you please, so that if we're going to refer to it, we can let the public.
Certainly.
View of it. Thank you.
Just one moment.
And if you would go ahead and talk, I think I can handle sending that to her.
Okay, great.
In my email.
And I'm, I'm watching for.
It's already in my email, I believe, from Ms. Powell.
And Leslie, it was sent around midday, twelve twenty four was the original that was sent to the board and Dr. Atkins. And I just forwarded it to you directly as well, Leslie. So the, what I sent as far as the update, that's actually after talking with Jeanette and Chantel multiple times. You know, I felt that it was appropriate for us to put a statement together, together that explained where we are, because the request was confusing to us at first. We just didn't know how it fit in the context of everything else we already have going on with them. So that's really what that first paragraph is, is it's, it's something that Jeanette and myself and Chantel agreed was a fair statement of, of where we are right now. And essentially, that is that the, their funding request at this time, that they're being Cultivate Charlottesville's request, instead of being made to the school board, you know, for additional funding to go into school nutrition, it's really more appropriate for that, for those requests to go to the city. And that any funding that they're successful in, in gaining would go towards the food equity initiatives that they're already collaborating and discussing. So it was just, there was some, some confusion on our part when the request came in. And so that's, we did have several discussions with them, and that was really helpful. And then for the benefit of the, the board and the, and the public here now, this document just goes on to summarize all the successful grant collaborations we've had to date. There's actually a farm-to-school grant when Carlton got here, which was before I actually ended up in this role. So I had no knowledge of it, but Carlton informed me that when he first got here, there was a, an original farm-to-school grant that was, you know, on its way out. But it, that was what was used to establish the Harvest of the Month program. And I'm happy to say that's a program that has operated continuously since its inception. And that's something that's really important to us, is that whatever steps forward we take with City Schoolyard Gardens or Cultivate, if you will, that we never step back, that we don't do something with a grant. And then when the grant funding goes away, well, we can't do that anymore. So I do, we really believe it's something where pace and sort of that slow and steady wins the race sometimes. Not that we want to go slowly and not that we have gone slowly. I think when you look at this two-page document, you'll see there's quite a bit that's been going on. There are some smaller grants that we actually, in the, sometimes the schoolyard garden is the recipient. But like this two thousand dollar grant, I believe we were the recipient on that. Shaping Our Futures, that grant, Cultivate is the recipient for that. Or city, or rather, I think it actually is, it's City Schoolyard Garden is the recipient for that grant. And that one is a hundred thousand dollars a year over the next five years. So that's not an insignificant grant. It's very significant. And so you can see, granted, the pandemic did alter our plans somewhat for that grant, but we've still been able to do quite a few meaningful things together, which you can see there were purchases of knives, cutting boards, measuring cups. Those are all things that help with fresh fruits and vegetables prep. But also, they purchased a new oven for Johnson, which, if you're familiar with our mobile feeding program, Johnson has been one of our two main hubs with CHS being the other one that we've been operating out of. So they really were helpful with an oven replacement there. And also, if you've seen our current operation, coolers play a huge part of our push out into the community. And City Schoolyard Garden was huge, helping us get more coolers because we simply didn't have enough when we were starting up. And then we have other things we still need to do with these monies that are not yet fully accomplished. There's additional new equipment that's planned to go into CHS to the serving lines. And we haven't executed on that yet. We need to. We will. And then you can see the other points there. I definitely don't want to read a two-page document to you guys. But then, and then the local on-the-line program is another grant that, again, I think we, we were the recipient. But whether we're the recipient or they're the recipient, we collaborate around these things and we make these things happen together. And so then there's some highlights of the act of other accomplishments and programs. I've listed a half a dozen or so there. And then what some of our focuses are, we want to continue working with them on grant funds. And there's a farm-to-school coordinator position that has always been discussed and planned. But that would be a position, it was always discussed as a position under Cultivate Charlottesville or City Schoolyard Gardens. And then I also included for you all some examples of how Carlton Jones and nutrition team have collaborated with our students. And some of this has been with City Schoolyards Gardens, and some of it has just been independent with Carlton, working with students. And Carlton is with us here on the, on the panel, if you'd like for him to speak. He's so knowledgeable about all this. He's been the person on the front lines with these collaborations and making the changes. But these are, they're specific examples of things where menus have changed and even processes have changed as a direct result of student feedback. And he welcomes that collaboration. And I did not realize this until I was talking with Jeanette and Chantel. But I said, you know, it would be really great if Carlton could continue meeting with students via Zoom even during the pandemic. And she said, he's already doing that. I'm like, oh, great. So that's, you know, short of me reading the, the document, which I'm sure Leslie will post now as part of the ESP, we're happy to answer questions.
I have a question. I'm confused. So was the hundred thousand dollar request to continue things that the grant funding has run out for? Or was it a request to enhance our nutrition program?
So we are not the recipient of the grant, so we can't speak in this moment to the specific accounting of where they are and spending that grant down. But Carlton knows that there are several initiatives that were tied to that grant application for the five hundred thousand dollars that we still need to execute on in collaboration with them. Carlton, would you like to say anything else in response to that question?
I think, I think her question was, was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lashandra, is Food Justice Network, their ask of the a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars is what they were asking for. And is that correct, Lashandra, or are you referencing this, this current grant?
I was, yeah, I was asking the request this year or the letter, the request we got recently for the hundred and twenty five thousand over the next five years, what was that going to be used for?
So that's the part where we got confused as well, because we didn't have clarity on that. And we didn't, we didn't have a, a plan in school nutrition for how to execute on another hundred and twenty five thousand dollars when we haven't finished executing on the things that we were in the grant application that we collaborated on. So that's part of where the confusion was, Ms. Bryson Morseberger.
So they don't need the hundred and twenty five thousand anymore because we still have grant money for the hundred and twenty five thousand to cover? Like, it's still money in the grant somewhere?
There is still money in the grant. And Mr. Jones, would you like to comment on where we are with, with your, your thoughts on the, any need for additional funding? Because I know you've expressed yourself very clearly in, in these conversations over the past week or so.
Sure. The, the grant was originally supposed to start this year, but through COVID, of course, it got held back. So we have not been able to really start all of the initiatives that we have with the grant funding. So, you know, in my opinion, you know, there were no need for any additional funds at, at this time because we have not, you know, we, we haven't been able to implement what we agreed to, collaboration on the grant.
Any other questions, Lashandra?
I, I think I'm good on that one. I was just a little bit, this goes back to, you know, the before times when I would come to school board and I would ask a question about funding. And when you're in the middle of the budget, whatever it was, someone would say, you should probably make the request of the city council. And then city council's like, we don't control the school budget. The school controls the school budget. So that was the part I was confused on, is that I was confused about where, what the hundred and twenty five thousand dollar request was for. And I was confused about when people come and they have a question about the budget or wanting to add something to the budget. Shouldn't we be answering it and not sending them to city council? But it's about a grant that the city controls. So now I get it.
Dr. Kraft, do you have any questions?
Well, I think this, this is help, this is helpful to me. And what I'm getting from this is once we, once we get back in school, that some of the, the nutrition issues that were raised by various people during public comment, et cetera, are going to be addressed through this, the hundred thousand dollar grant, through that grant. So that, that's, you know, that will move us forward, I guess, on some of the issues that Cultivate Charlottesville was wanting to do with us. So is that, is that correct, Mr. Jones? Is that?
That's correct. And, and some of the initiatives are still going on now. Like, I have already met with the, with the Food Justice interns, had a great conversation with them, and they have some action items that we're working on now. So we're already preparing for next school year, e- even though we aren't there yet.
And just to be clear, when I saw, I confess, when that email came through, it was the same week we were setting up that vaccine clinic. So I didn't even really read it until about forty-eight hours after you guys had it in your hands. But when I finally did get around to looking at it, I could tell that there, that Carlton had not been part of the request because there were some pieces in there that, that weren't exactly correct as far as wages for nutrition workers and how unpaid meal charges are covered. So I think the spirit is right, and I think our vision together with them is spot on, but we just weren't in sync with this request. And it's really important when we're accountable to execute on something in our, one of our departments, that we are completely in sync and understand exactly what the expectations are. So it's not that things are not being done. It's not even that the work stopped during the pandemic. It clearly hasn't. You'll see that, you know, Carlton still, I didn't know this, well, I sort of did because I was involved with distribution, but we're pushing out double portions of fruit, fresh fruit, even, you know, during the pandemic. So we're still doing some things. Are we limited right now because of how we're having to operate? Certainly. You know, our menu options are more limited right now. But even once we went back to serving daily, Carlton and his team really worked to get a lot of the menu options expanded very quickly. And I've been really, you know, there've been comments about some of the things that the students have really liked and enjoyed. And we, and he also managed to move forward with more meatless options even during these operating conditions.
So Madam Chair, may I ask one last question?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think Lashandra helped me, but Lashandra, I'm gonna ask it again so I can make sure I'm clear. We, are we expected to assist with the hundred and twenty five thousand dollar ask? Or was that anticipating the fact that all of the players thought we might be short a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars? So in other words, they don't need it right now? And if at some point in time it is needed, an ask will be made? Because I'm a little concerned about the hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Because if we have a commitment, I know how we are, we don't want to not meet our commitment.
So we don't have a commitment to fund an additional hundred and twenty five thousand dollars? And there's no matching requirements or anything like that. And in fact, speaking very directly with Carlton, what our obligations are under that grant, we, he felt very strongly, we're, we're, you know, as much as COVID circumstances will allow, there's not any financial constraints on us moving forward with everything that we have, you know, committed and planned to do with them, with, you know, City Schoolyard Garden or Cultivate. And we also don't have any intentions of necessarily stopping with this five hundred thousand. We want to keep going, but we do feel it's very important to execute on things in a, in a way with fidelity for the funds we already have and then move forward from, from there.
So I understand now. Okay. It, yes, you're right. It read one way, but you have cleared up the ambiguity and the gray area. So I'm good. We're good. School, City Schoolyard Garden, Cultivate Charlottesville is good. Great meals and great nutrition is on the horizon. It's only going to get better from here, Mr. Jones.
Ms. McKeever, did you have a question? Yeah, I just wanted to say to Mr. Jones, thank you so much for all of your work. I cannot tell you how grateful you're present. You're, it's just been transformational, your vision for our nutrition department. And I, you don't get, you don't come to our board meeting very often, and, and that's probably good for you. We lost you, Jennifer. Can't hear you.
We lost you, Jennifer.
Well, it's a shame because we really do need to hear all these great things that the nutrition team are doing because.
Well, thank you. I didn't get to hear it all, but thank you.
Of course. Thank you again.
Just to add that also, that sitting on the SHAB board, I've heard over the past few years of lots of wonderful things that we have been implementing. So I, I mean, I think our goals are very aligned with Cultivate Charlottesville, and I think we've, we have been moving in that in some directions. And I agree with Ms. McKeever. Thank you very much for your leadership, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna continue moving forward.
Well, we're gonna help you out, Mr. Jones. We're gonna help you out because we're gonna have you come and do a Zoom and show us some fancy cutting tricks and some healthy food tips and, you know, lighten up our school board meetings, you know? Because this time of the year, we're heavy laden with budget, and we're doing the best we can. And so a nice little healthy tip will take us a long way. So you may think you're not coming to our board meetings, but we are going to change that. Be careful what you wish for.
Okay, I, I bring my big white chef hat when I come.
So, Mr. Jones, I want to chime in too, for taking nutrition program to the next level. A lot of positive comments out in the community.
Oh, thank you. It's, we have, we have, we have a great staff, and, you know, I couldn't do anything without them.
Yes. So I just wanted to throw my plug in there.
My mama also wants me to tell you that your staff are amazing. She tells me every day how nice those ladies are when they, when she goes and picks up those lunches.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. I'll make sure I pass that on also.
Please, thanks.
Mr. Jones, you're glad you came tonight, right?
I am. I, I need to come more often.
And anytime.
We will be happy to put you on there, Jenda, whenever you like.
Okay.
Little boost of appreciation. Yes, just show up anytime.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for taking the time. Ms. Powell and, and staff, thank you for putting that together for everybody. And as far as the information on grants and just our relationship with everybody. So thank you for that. And if anybody else has any questions, please feel free to, you know, send emails or reach out. And anything else that anybody wants to discuss regarding budget.
I just ask that, you know, as I know we're asking, Dr. Atkins, we're asking you and staff to go back and, and do more work. And it would be helpful to be able to get the information at least a couple of days before our, our board meeting. So I would just ask that, if, if, if that's possible to, to do that.
Yes, yes, Dr. Kraft, we can certainly do that.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. Any other questions, comments?
Just want to thank Dr. Atkins and the team for going back and, and revisiting our requests. We do greatly appreciate it. Thank you all for all of your hard work.
We do greatly appreciate it. Thank you all for all of your hard work. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Anybody else? Yes, I want to express my gratitude. I also want to just, again, reiterate, and I know we can't probably say it enough, that, you know, this is a budget, you know, really geared towards equity, really geared towards trying to, you know, add some positions and some programmatic changes that will really make a positive impact on our students as we continue to, you know, move forward to getting everybody back in the building next fall. You know, and so, but a reminder, you know, that this is one-time funding. So, you know, I do look to and I look forward to getting, you know, some, some message and clarity from city council, you know, as they continue to work through their budget. And, you know, realizing that they have a new city manager, you know, stepping in to, to their budget work, I believe this next week. But it is really, it will be helpful to kind of know where and how they're leaning as, as they look at their numbers and what they can do to continue to support, you know, the schools and our students. You know, because our, our students are our future, you know? So it is important and look forward to hopefully working with them and having some more communication with them. And we are always here if they have questions. You know, Dr. Atkins is here and available for any clarity. But we, we do appreciate their support always. So thank you, everybody, for all the work that you've done.
Ms. Torres?
Yes, ma'am.
May I add something about March 8th, our opening?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you to the board. We are moving forward to open face-to-face with our students, with the students whose families and the students indicated they wanted to come back face-to-face. March 8th, we will welcome back our students, preschool through sixth grade, face-to-face. And that is those students who have selected that option. For students who are in grades seven through 12, it will be targeted students. Students who will need the support, special education students, our English language learners, our students who are below grade level or struggling, be it academically, emotionally. We will be inviting those students to come back in. The message that I'd like to send to our community is, we have limited bus transportation. Because of COVID, the number of drivers that we have to operate our buses has diminished significantly. Most of our bus drivers are 65 years old or older and fall into the COVID risk category. So therefore, we don't have as many bus drivers as we have had in the past, coupled with the requirement for social distancing. We cannot transport as, seat as many students on a bus as we have in the past. So we will be sending out communications to our families. We're trying to run those routes now. Sherry and Amy are doing a yeoman's job to run the routes for buses. And next week, we plan to send out communications to our families to say, if you can transport your student, we need your help. Please drive your student to school. That frees up a seat on the bus for another student. We have some students whose families do not have transportation and will absolutely need a seat on the bus. So we're asking every family who can transport, please do, so that we will have the capacity and the seating space to transport those students who absolutely need to be on the bus. So thank you for all of your help and we are looking forward to welcoming our students back in the building March 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Thank you, staff, and thank you, everybody else. And with that, let me just remind everybody that we, upcoming meetings, we do have a meeting next Thursday, February 18th, which will be to hear the superintendent's recommendation for our current, in this next year's budget. And that will be a five o'clock meeting via Zoom. And then we have a meeting Monday, March 1st, where we get to present our budget recommendation, recommendation to city council. And I think that's it for now. So thank you, everybody, for your communications and your thoughts and recommendations. And with that, I will adjourn our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.